Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the town of Annelias planning board meeting for March tenth, twenty twenty five. We are in person and hybrid online. The first item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. And Carrie, I just had a couple of comments I didn't get a chance to sound to Lisa. Do you have the minutes? Or do you want to just tell, if you want to, then I can show you after.
Yeah, that's fine.
There's just a couple of things under the in-person attendees. There's a question mark by one of the names, which I think is William Merriam, who's mentioned later on in the minutes for the public hearing. So his name is William Merriam, that we've received a letter from as well.
Okay.
So number six on the next page of the speakers at the public hearing, would he change from Merriman to Merriam?
Is that M E R I U M?
M E R R I A M. Pretty sure, but we can check again.
Okay.
And then the only other thing is Doug, where it says on page two, it says engineer Miller explains stormwater and a map plan review. Is it like map comma, plan, comma, and report?
Yes.
Yeah, so we want to change that to map comma, plan, comma, and report. But I can double check with you guys as well. So I don't know if anyone else has any other comments on the minutes or I would entertain a motion for approval with the settings.
Go ahead.
What?
I was just gonna say with those changes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, motion made by Rich, second by Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, the minutes are approved with those changes. The next item on the agenda is for Tom Cincella, for the continuation of the zone change recommendation to the town board. For this is on Salt Springs Road, it's three tax map numbers, zero nine seven point dash zero one, dash zero three point one, zero nine seven point dash zero one, dash zero three point two, and zero nine seven point dash zero one dash zero three point three. Did you want to provide any?
Just briefly, really briefly.
Sure.
So I'm, I'm Vogel, attorney for Cincella. I'm just real quick, we submitted an updated figure at the board's request, just adding on the two hundred fifty foot forever wild area and six hundred foot buffer area that comes out of that agreement that the company entered into a changing seasons. The only other piece of housekeeping really is that the town board at its last meeting, since we came here the last time, have renewed the town a special use permit for the site. And they included some language that I thought that kind of came up during the discussion at the last meeting about the quarry commission reviewing and making a determination about how adjacent properties will be notified about blasting activities. So that's going to be a topic for the quarry commission. I think that came up the last meeting. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention that that was being addressed.
Okay.
Otherwise, we didn't really have anything else. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. But we appreciate the board's consideration over recommendation of support of the zone change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so we can discuss a little bit as a board, but Erin, I know you sent some websites that, and said that we'd like to start.
You don't have to put it up yet. I did prepare ahead of time with the things that I wanted to share or suggest. And I had a web, a couple of web links I sent to Lisa, so it would be easy for her to know.
Yeah, I thought we'd start off with that since Carrie's got them ready to go.
So in addition to what was stated about the changes made by the town board to the natural resources recovery permit, they added in a section about notifications and that with regards to bodily injury or property damage, other than damage to underground wells, it was the five days, as it was in the original permit. And then with respect to bodily injury or property damage relating to underground wells or water supplies, they changed that to thirty days, which was a good gesture. We appreciate it. Although I would like to, the record to show that thirty days isn't usually ample time for those kinds of things to show up based on what we learned in the drinking water source protection program. But I think you were part of that too, weren't you? So, but I don't really think that that matters for what we're doing here today. Which, I was, one of my first things I want to talk about, a suggestion might be, I know that, and one of the reasons why I asked the questions that I did at the last meeting, thank you for your patience in answering them, is that some of the properties bordering the area have deed restrictions already. So they are, the people who own those properties are aware of what's proposed to be going on and they have a deed restriction that prevents them from opposing it. That also makes them aware of the things that could happen to their property with the mine being there, right? So I bring that up because the one house on Salt Springs that is right in the middle, kind of along that side, you've already taken care of that situation. In that I would suggest that there be some kind of a buffer between existing structures and or wells, drinking water wells, the amount of feet to be determined. I did a kind of a review of some other quarries around the country that were easily accessible based on the code in their permit and it was stated. And five hundred feet or so seems to be a pretty common one. But that is up for discussion, obviously. But that doesn't really change a whole lot from what you're proposing. Only those couple houses of the, I believe the last names of the owners are Lapina and Gromaldi, which are kind of right down there on Salt Springs. I assume you know.
Yeah, I actually talked to Mr. Gromaldi Thursday or Friday last week. He called, he was asking some questions. And Jack, whose measurements form, answered his question.
How far is it, the proposed boundary of the mine to their house or well?
Well, I don't, I'm not sure exactly where their house sits on their lot. It's a little over three hundred feet to the back of the corner of your lot. I'm guessing it's five to six hundred, but I would assume his wells in his front yard and his seppics in his back, just by the topography and generally septic systems of, you know, or gravity. So I'm assuming it's in the, in the back of his house. Like I said, I talked to Mr. Gromaldi. And I think he's comfortable with it.
So what I have here kind of replicates or remixes what's already kind of going on and has been accepted by the changing seasons folks. So it seems reasonable that that might already be being accomplished, but it would be important, I think, that it be considered to be documented in the town's maps. Just like we talked about having, and I don't know what they're, what it would be called, but how the changing seasons, they have the forever wild area and then it, which includes and to be extended out to a total of six hundred feet. We talked about having that stuff somehow documented in the town.
That's the unrestricted.
How does that work though?
That would be filed with the, with the county, yeah, with the restricted.
So. Maybe that would be something that could be extended as a buffer. You could have a buffer around the proposed boundary of the mine. Where? To the left and bottom, the south and west. You know, just as a paperwork thing, not, I don't think it affects a lot of what you're doing.
Well, there really is, there's, there's really a buffer there because on those pieces of property is, are some restrictions also. So even though they're not, they're not there, there's, there's restrictions filed with the county on those parcels of property.
Okay. On the prevent, that, that deal, so they can't develop it.
I mean, there's no mining, commercial buildings, there's, there's a, there's a bunch of stuff in the agreement that's filed with the county.
So maybe that's kind of already taken care of.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that was already, that's had covenants, restricted covenants on it for what, for years.
I'm sorry, just to clarify, the parcels owned by you, because I can't see from this far.
Yeah. So, so zero, so these two parcels, right, to the west, zero, zero, seven, zero, one, zero, four point one.
The big one, I'm sorry, with all the writing on it?
Yeah, the one with all the writing on it and the one with a sliver right next to it. Those both have restricted covenants already.
Oh, come on, you're not saying, but, but who are they?
I bought one.
But you own them.
Cincello.
All of the ones outlined in black, they are.
Okay. So we're talking about, oh, there's zone changing, just the hatched area.
Correct.
Nothing else is being rezoned on, on any of those parcels. So I guess the idea of, of more restrictions right now doesn't seem.
Yes.
It's unnecessary, yeah, yeah.
It's, there's restricted covenants on it and they're not zoned for mining and we're not seeing.
Yeah, right. Okay, so that makes sense. Was more about finding some way to extend a buffer on the other sides that butt up against residential that's filed. But it sounds like you.
It, yeah, it does, because those, you know, obviously those are whole tax parcels, so it's easy to make those. The, you know, where the buffer is now up there is only a partial and it, you know, obviously runs a J-shaped piece. So there has, there's, you know, meets, there's a restriction or there's a the surveyor, there's legal description.
I know.
Well, there's also, I guess what it's, there's also a natural buffer in that they own those parcels.
Yeah. The parcels are the buffer.
They're not going to build a business there, or they're not going to sell it to someone who's going to build something. And they would have to get subdivided as well. So that's a whole other thing that we have.
Well, then if they did, it would be knowing that this is what's going on now. So it would be moved because they would be buying it with this condition already in place.
The other thing is, if there were ever a subdivision, they would have to come to this board. Or future this boards.
So, well, that kind of answers those couple of questions that I had.
So it does actually exist, there's just.
It just happens already. Yeah, no, that's good. It's unpreventable.
Yeah.
So the quarry committee for the comprehensive plan went through a bunch of stuff and I think you've seen all that. And so as a recommendation, I would recommend to the town board that they go through with the items that were requested or suggested as part of developing a new mine, considering this is a new area to be mined. And I can email this to Jamie, I put it in, no one else. So if anyone wanted to cut and paste or if anybody, you know, you want to flow in that way as a group.
I'm confused. If you could clarify what you just said, because our only job is to recommend a positive or negative zone change.
What I'm suggesting. So what I'm suggesting would be, these are things that I think would be important and I want to have them on record for the town board to hear as well. But should as a group, we decide to make whatever recommendation, these could be contributing additions, everybody. This is my contribution to the conversation.
Yeah, go, go ahead and listen and then we can discuss as a board.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So I'm suggesting that, it's on page twenty seven that it starts. There were some suggestions by the quarry study group to, and it became part of the comprehensive plan of what questions to ask, what tests to require, all of that kind of stuff as part of the development of mine. And I would suggest that those things be carried out. Right, that's pretty straightforward. I have, you know, example, I don't think we need to, I don't need to read them unless we want to, or if people already know what they are, they've looked at it themselves.
Are you suggesting all, any and all of them, or just highlighting some specific ones?
Well, I think the most important ones would be to, and I have this as a separate item, would be to install an additional monitoring well at the south end of the proposed quarry site, just like you have elsewhere in the parcel, correct?
Well, so, so then this new area is not, there's no mining below the water table. That's going to be permitted, so there's not going to be any impact on groundwater wells or anything like that. It's not going below water.
Okay, well, then that's the town board, because we don't, this is just to the town board.
Yep. I'm sorry, but I want to jump in again because I'm trying to just focus at what our mission is. These are all things that the town board should consider when putting together the permit.
I think we could, we could give a blanket statement.
That's what I did.
Just that the town board, in looking at this review, the quarry commission for comprehensive plan to be done with it.
Yeah. The things that aren't included in here that I would suggest would be to install an additional monitoring well on the south side of the property, like you have other monitoring wells in the quarry. And we had talked about having, you have the new air and dust monitoring system that's going in. We talked about maybe having a residence or a building or a post or something on the south side and having another station there. We talked about that at the last meeting. And then perhaps including an additional community member on the quarry commission of a person from the south side of things somewhere. And then one of the things that I'm actually most interested in is the reclamation parts of this.
And I saw, I think, I'm just, sorry, just for one second to clarify. I think an additional community member from that south side, if they can find someone willing to do it, would, would be a good thing. I think the other thing to keep in mind is that this is not a new site, that a lot of those were, were brand new or any future.
Right.
Quarries, so that's why I think again, we can just say, you know, any, just consider any recommendations by the quarry commission that would apply in this case.
I looked at all and I couldn't find.
Including the resident, the community resident. Like I said, if they can find someone willing and able to do it. But yeah, so that would be my thoughts.
I agree, because it all doesn't apply to this case, the stuff that was discussed. And I was having trouble finding the reclamation plan. I searched on the town's website, I saw that there were some brief notes in the amended permit. But I was hoping you could explain, you talked about it a little bit and that you kind of, as you, as you finish in an area, you come back through and topsoil and seed. And I was like, well, what are, I don't know a lot about this. I had to educate myself a little bit. And I see these, if you would scroll down a little bit, please Carrie, there's some great examples of things that you've posted on here that, I mean, I don't know if any of this is possible, but it would be wonderful.
Well, I think the idea of the reclamation, you know, these, these ideas, is there's a lot of different things possible. And our reclamation plan right now is to simply put it back into a useful state, you know, by reseeding and sloping some of the sides. Last time, we, we used to slope all the sides, the town board, the last time wanted to see, it was kind of attractive to see some, you know, some open faces, you know, and things like that, some variation rather than just all one thing planned. So before there's, obviously if there's any changes other than, that's why it's a floating zone, you know, the, 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 the mining is, so it goes back to RA when we're done mining there, before there was anything else. And that's the idea. So before any of this could happen, you have, you would have to come in for, again, for approvals and so on. But these are just the idea, when, when you see things like that, people would never envision an old quarry or an old mine to be turned into something like that, the athletic fields and one in Shanghai. Need, I think there's one in up in Maine here that's pretty, not sure where.
I thought the residential one was actually really cool.
I think it's a former Blueout quarry in Portland, Maine, over here on the left. It's just an idea to give people ideas because people can't visualize that happening. But right now, we just, ours is, is a simple, put vegetation back, get it, get it grown and, and plant what's there.
So it's like a blank slate.
It is, sure, sure. I mean, for a while, years ago, I mean, golf courses were hot when, back in the eighties. You know, people were, you know, reclaiming them into golf courses, unique areas, the topography of it provided in unique. I wouldn't want to own a golf course right now. So it's there, you know, what's in favor forty years ago might not be in the, in the future. I mean, we've thrown around the idea of, you know, solar farm because the, you know, most of people oppose solar farms because the visual impacts where this, you know, we got firms around it. It's obviously there's an invitation from quarry, you know, so those ideas like that. But I don't know, when the time comes, we'll figure out whether it's residential, whether it's, we, well, actually we can't do commercial because that's against the covenants.
We scroll up, and, and, you know, the housing on the quarry neighborhood one on the left there. I don't know if I got it, it goes to it. But would this be something you would consider?
This board has nothing to do with reclamation. That is between the developer and the DEC and whatever plan they come up with and agree upon, that's where it's headed.
Well, actually that part's already done. The reclamation plan is part of this permit, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to get the conversation started on, in eight years or so, when you're done there, let's start thinking, I'm putting it out there now as a, as a question or a suggestion to the community, to the town board of, let's start thinking about this. And I'm saying it tonight because we're talking about the project. I do understand, Rich, what our task is tonight. But I'm taking this opportunity to kind of start a conversation here and get people thinking.
We consider anything, you know, obviously we're in business to try and, try and make money, you know. We, you know, something that was, you know, obviously we've just got to be part of something in the town lots. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ideas and like I said, that this whole idea of our website is to make the public aware this isn't going to be wasted land when it's done, you know, and that's the important thing on these reclamation lines. You know, it's not, well, you mined it out, now we can do with this piece of land. There's all kinds of.
Yeah.
Opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know all the history of the Twin Pond site that we just, as an award, approved the project for the Twin Ponds, but that was an old quarry site, so that's turning into residential and mixed use. So, yeah, so we can consider that as a.
It's not going to be wasted land at the end there. There's a lot, a lot of different opportunities for us to say yes or no to that.
I'm not asking you to do that.
Things were hot, like I said, back, back then, were, were golf courses. I don't know if, like I said, if a solar farm is still going to be something that, that possible in the future or, or, you know, a development of some sort, you know. That was certainly part of the reason why we opened the last lot in changing seasons. We're trying to come up through there with, be able to hook into utilities, you know, sewer water, that sort. We went over to Wood, or to Dugan Road, hopefully be able to go into Briar Brook, you know, and maybe hook into those and pull that up in there to be able to develop that in the future. And when we get through this layer of rock, we're taking a thin layer, we get into a softer rock, which isn't as commercially valuable. But then you can dig sewer lines and water lines, you don't run into that, what you're trying to do when you're trying to run the stuff to.
I was wondering about that.
If you were down through that, you could run that water line to your neighborhood for less than half the price.
Well, we've moved on.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying, when we take that one layer of rock off, we can get into a.
So that wouldn't hold up any potential development in that, in, in an early perspective of saying, oh, well, if it's just a rock hole, then you can't do anything in there. What you're saying is that it's, you can work with it.
Oh, absolutely. It's actually easier to work with, for sure.
Well, that's all I have. Thank you.
David, you had your.
Yeah. I, I just, I just want to thank Karen for bringing this up. I did not know a lot of this stuff that you brought out and it makes a lot of sense. We are a planning board. You're thinking about planning in the future. It is not about the impact, about whether we give them the right permit to go ahead and expand the quarry. But that's a very good point that you bring in because our constituency, especially the ones that are listening right now and they're head back, you know, listening to our board, have more information now to learn about what possible planning in the future. Looks like Mr. Cincella's already been looking at that, his website on it and stuff. So I'm very impressed on what they're doing as well. But thank you for bringing that.
Sounds a chip, something.
No, it was answered. I did want to ask, so I recall from the last meeting, this fourteen acre addition, I gave you five to seven years of materials.
Eight years were projected.
And it's, I'm relatively muted boards, I've not been on, and there was a discussion about the Luke quarry near Gulf Road. Does this have any bearing on your interest in trying to go there in terms of delaying the deed for that? Or is there any relationship at all, or are they totally unrelated?
Well, it wasn't related because we were asked to put the new one on hold while they developed the comprehensive plan. And I said at the time, well, we can, but we've got a little more area of this quarry that we could mine if we could get that. We now own the adjacent land to it, blah, blah, blah. So we thought it was going to be a relatively easy venture. Here we are almost three years into holding on. So it started off related, but now it's basically, like I said, the quarry right now is, we're closed right now for the winter. We haven't done that in fifty-five years. We're very limited on our, on our reserves. We do have other stuff I was telling you. We've got that middle layer of stone, it's not as commercially viable, but it, it's fused. We pulled some out to eighty-one for some of the ramps and stuff. But it's not, it's just one thin layer that's the most valuable that we're at.
Is that what you turn into rock, to type two runner crush? Is that the most valuable rock in there?
No, no, finished stone for like blacktop and concrete and stuff. Some bases is a type two runner crush, which you must spot sometimes in your.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's most, that's the biggest quantity that people use, you know, it's, it's very versatile, but it's not the most valuable.
So it's like the specific aggregate sizes for the, you know, for the, the.
Correct, correct.
Horse of the asphalt horse and a component of concrete, that kind of thing?
Yeah, for blacktop, concrete, things of that nature. Little more refining to it, you know, every time you touch something, you want to add value to it, you know, that idea.
Well, I mean, I just wanted to point out some things that are worth, like as far as, you know, this is already part of quarry lands. So it's, the parcels are, you know, already partly the quarry as they are. And so this is just the extension of that, and those parcels already exist. Also, you know, there is strict guidance by New York State, by the town board and the quarry commission that has been put back into effect. And I know you guys, there's lots of benefits to the quarter game local. And, you know, obviously you guys have extensive knowledge on all of this and, and what you've done even just in obtaining the other parcels and putting in those default buffers and, you know, the different covenants and restrictions and working with the community and, you know, the local area. So. So I'm ready to entertain a motion for a positive recommendation, but I don't know if anyone else wants to discuss anything before we do that.
Did we want to add language? You know, positive recommendation, and this board recommends that when the town board reviews an application for a quarry permit, that the quarry commission recommendations be considered.
Yeah, I think that's it, I think.
That's exactly the motion I was going to make.
Yeah, I think we could add, like Erin said, like I said, the community residents for the south side of those parcels. And, you know.
Say that again.
Consider adding a community resident to the quarry commission from this, that lives along the south side of these parcels. And also, just as a little addition to considering the recommendations from the comprehensive plan of quarry study group, you know, we have eight years to start for the town board to start considering reclamation ideas.
We'll still have public hearings.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the town board has to have a public hearing. Whether we make our recommendation positive or negative, the town board will be holding a public hearing for the zone change as well, so.
So I mean, positive recommendation with those considerations as Jamie.
That would also improve the monitoring well in the south end of the property. And the, it's going to be called, would you call it monitoring wells? I don't, they said we don't need a, they said it's not a monitoring well.
Yeah.
I think it's so that you can, it was one of the recommendations that made sense to me. Does that make sense to you?
That. That house that you were concerned about, we own, we, and we, then we sold with the covenants and it's one of the closest there in the middle, if you will.
Yeah.
We spent years monitoring that well when we were closest to it coming up from the south. You know, we're not going near there. I mean, it's, you know, putting in a monitoring well, it, we haven't had well problems there. I mean, originally all the well stuff was in there from the nineteen eighties because obviously people were concerned at that point, you know. And, but we've been there since, you know. And, but we've been there since, you know, the seventies with, with, I, I don't, I don't know if we ever had a problem with a well, you know? Um, I think it's with where we're going and what we're doing there, we're not getting any closer to any more wells than we have in the past. And, and like Mike said, you know, we're, we aren't, we aren't monitoring, or we're not mining groundwater at all. Um, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary, I think, uh.
Where are the ones you already have? Because I, I'm remembering why I brought that up and.
We have three within.
Yeah, it said that somewhere in the report.
But it's not, I mean, I don't think they're mapped where they are, I mean, some of them we run twenty-four seven pumping water for our walk wash plants and stuff, like I said.
You got all your water from Route Five Municipal Water?
No. Now, the root water doesn't, uh, stops at changing seasons.
Oh, okay. Um, the reason I brought that up is a separate item than just the quarry, um, commissioner, quarry study recommendations was because in the, in the permit, it talked about that it was, the area was covered by three monitoring wells that you already had. And I wondered if, because you're expanding the area, having an additional one to cover that for whatever it is you're using them for would be appropriate. But I didn't know, I don't know where they are, and I don't know if you already have one that does what it needs to do that would include this area as a way of bringing the new work up in line with everything that's already been approved.
Yeah, I think we're going away from all the, the wells we're talking about, the Grimaldi well would be the only one we're actually probably getting closer to than, than, than we've been in the past.
Okay. I don't, I, I disagree with that, with getting that specific about those monitoring items, because we've asked them to consider the recommendations, we've asked to put a, we've asked to put a resident on that commission, I think that's up for that quarry commission to determine. Okay. That's just my thoughts.
No, I, I agree.
I think the general recommendation. Well, that kind of answers the question I had and why I brought that up. Yeah, and, and I mean, for the air monitoring too, I think it would be up to the quarry commission. I just want to make sure the things that they've agreed to do are documented as part of everything, because I think that, um, people want to know that the things that are said are followed through on, and. And that's why we have the quarry commission. Well, we, we get to see what they produce in their new form, so, um. I think, I think us having the umbrella conditions is what, is, is a good adding to a, a good recommendation for us, and I think we, we need to have a to do what they want to.
Yeah, we have a motion on.
Yes.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, thank you, David. All right, so we have a motion made by Rich, you want to repeat it, or do you want, um, do you want to read the?
Motion to recommend that the town board approve the zone change from restricted agricultural to N R D D uh, in the hatched area as la- outlined on the J M T plan dated, whatever it is I'm gonna look at, um, on tax maps, um. The three tax, man, so nine seven.
Sorry, February twenty-sixth. Does that look right?
Yes. Um, the further recommendation that the town board consider the quarry commission recommendations when and if the town board issues a quarry permit for the areas that are rezoned, and.
The quarry study group from the comprehensive plan. The quarry commission is the group now that, yeah, they're two different. Yeah.
And the quarry study group was part of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
I don't know if she was correct.
That's what I did, uh, the court study group that was part of the comprehensive plan, um, commission.
No, there's no commission.
Okay, comprehensive plan, got it.
For the comprehensive plan course.
Yeah, the first study group. When and the town board issues a quarry permit for the area, uh, rezoned. Uh, that the town board consider adding a resident to the quarry commission, uh, who lives along the south side of the parcel.
Yes.
And further, um, per the quarry study group at the time, the board should start considering quarry reclamation.
This time, correct? Yes. Got it, okay, so we have a motion made by Rich with the conditions that Jamie just reviewed. Seconded by David, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for a positive recommendation with those conditions.
Great, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's a three year.
Thank you for, uh, also providing everything we asked for, it was very helpful.
I figure it'll be helpful for the town board.
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Thank you, you too. I did not have any other business, but pardon you. I can use it for the town board.
Yeah, sorry, I was gonna make a donation.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Somebody mentioned that, that we are a planning board, and, uh, eight years is not a very long time in the history of town Manlius. So, one of the things that occurs to me is that when that quarry is through being used as a quarry, that one of the possibilities might be would be some high density housing. Because it seems to me that the number of people that we would like to add to the population of Manlius is constrained mightily by our present zoning, our present lack of, of area to put people in. And our inability to allow them to get where they want to go without getting in a car. That could be one of those land developments, not like Twin Ponds, which could dramatically increase the density and still make a very nice place to live.
Yeah.
Thing that I, uh, also very pleased to see what you said. Mr. Goncela had done almost everything we could think, everything we threw at him, he'd already taken care of.
Right.
That's one of the best planned presentations I've seen in the seven years I've been at the board.
Yeah, they really planned ahead.
Yeah, and they have really done their homework, how can we, how can we be a good neighbor? Now, how can we get the most out of this small piece of land without pissing everybody off?
Right.
He really took a positive approach, I, I, that's a.
Yeah, I agree.
He's in my list of an handful of really good developers.
He was before, before me at me at Tom Vegas a few years ago, and he did a really good job. Right, he was reopening that quarry in the end, but first.
Nice to hear that.
He had first class.
Yeah.
Designers and attorneys.
And places where you played golf, that's a quarry.
Well, I don't go.
You don't have to, but that's, that's a quarry. They ran out of stones, the owner said, what the hell am I gonna do with it? It was nineteen sixty-five, the federal government had money that they didn't have to do it. Caliburn Club started, Gasoline Club, same year, nineteen sixty-five. Look at that, I was there.
It's really just, the reason I brought all that up is worth noting that it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity, not a constraint. And we have very little valuable open space left in the town. And it's far more desirable, at least in my experience and education and everything, to consolidate development and density and stuff into areas where the infrastructure and utilities and everything can support it. And then reserve your other resources for the other things that they can provide. To the humans and the animals and everything. And this, as it is, with, uh, you know, several inches of topsoil and some cement on the top of it, doesn't do a whole lot for anybody, I'm gonna be real. But it prevents, like I, or it presents, like I said, a blank slate for any number of these things. And I liked the housing one too, you know, we see a lot of stuff come before us that is, what is the minimum I can do to meet the requirements to get my project done? And I get the feeling from the people that contributed to the comprehensive plan and everything, that they want to see something better. They want to see something more well thought out and more, you know, and that might, that involves saying no sometimes to things, because they're not good enough. And you know they can do better, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity, and it's coming within ten years. Yeah, I know that, I know several members of the town board are, you know, have been already been thinking of, of the reclamation in that area, especially as they, you know, even before they started working on actively working on the comprehensive plan.
When you say actively thinking, it means some kind of, uh, I think about this, I'm very encouraged that he has purchased a sequence of properties with no evident income to them to gain access to Dugan Road. There's quite a plan in his mind to have, to make that arrangement with that ownership, and Dugan Road's full of great issues and et cetera, and sightline issues, but at least he's done that.
Well, some of this stuff, being a family business, is stuff that he's inherited.
More interesting, he is the owner, so we're kind of at this sense as if it's public land, and we're gonna, some public entity is gonna drive this forward. And kind of combine with the idea, all he's doing is grading it and grassing it, well, frankly, that's the best you can do when it's still an active quarry. I mean, it's not, I don't, it's almost construed as a criticism, it's not, it can't be a criticism, it's not a fair thing to apply though at this stage.
I'm meaning it for the forever state.
Well, it's not a, I agree, it's not a forever, but I don't know if Tom, at his age, it's eight, ten years from now, will want to be a developer, or will he sell the entire complex to some third party?
Yeah, whatever he does is his decision, it's his property, it's his business, but I'm putting the, the, putting it out there, because there's other people who watch these meetings, there's developers who follow it.
That's my point.
And so.
So I, let me tell you what I got out of what you said, maybe that's the bad part. What I got was that we are not going to put restrictions on Mr. Goncela. It was obvious. Excellent, like I said, excellent presentation, well done, fought through, gave us everything we asked for and more, and every time he brings something up, he's got it. So the idea, we are not going to approve it, was not in the cards. But Aaron was, educated me first, but also put into the minutes of the meeting right now, that will be read by the town board. That will get them to start thinking in terms, and gives them some ideas on what we have done. That's all, we gave more information to the town board that needs to think of the future of this community, on what needs to be done. Do they need it? No, but I think it was an excellent way of doing it. We got an opportunity to do it, she put it out there, they're gonna be reading the minutes, and somebody will come up with some good ideas. Maybe somebody didn't get over it, maybe not, but the idea is, we're a planning board, we're planning for this community, we give some ideas out there for them on the table. It had no restrictions whatsoever on the applicant, was a great applicant with a great position.
Sorry, one more thing, uh, Doug, last week I, I heard that the D E C had come up with a whole new map of floodplains, wetlands. And it looked at first blush as, uh, it would further make it more difficult to develop anything north of right about here. You know, it's the whole northern half of the town, uh, is suddenly looking, like it's underwater. Now, I, I've spent enough time in the town of Manlius to know it's, it's a little squishier up there. Will that constrain further our ability to develop going forward?
What do you think, Jamie?
Good question.
So, Artie, what they've done, right, and just, uh, webinar that discussed the new, well, wetland regulations. So, there's, it's a whole litany of things, and actually, it, it wasn't a bad, um, webinar for anybody's interested to spend an hour, it lays out a lot of good things to give you a heads up on what's going on. But basically, what the D E C has said is, their old D E C maps are forty, fifty years old, and everybody has continued to use them, um, you know, through, this is through their eyes, so what they're saying is, um, it was time to revamp the maps, and they've taken an approach similar to the Army Corps. So, they currently, um, ditched the existing maps, so, um, there are eleven criteria that say, you know, you need to do this, 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 and this if you are in what you think is a wetland area in terms. For the town of Manlius, we were considered a suburbanized area. So, anything that comes in that we think has wetlands should be sent to the D E C to determine whether they're jurisdictional or not. Right, and there, there were like three or four criteria that probably triggered that anything that comes in here that we think looks like, smells like, was a wetland, people are gonna have to go and get jurisdiction from the D E C. So some of the things on that list, they, they note eleven criteria. Um, and the criteria are any endangered species on, on that property, a suburbanized area, which I believe Manlius is, um, and, um, uh, previously mapped areas.
So that's before they come to the thing, they have to go to the D E C, before they even think about doing it?
Well, yes, probably, probably so, right, I mean, you know, a, a savvy developer would do that. Um, but that would be a question that we would ask, you know, hey, this was mapped, we feel it's jurisdictional, did you, are you under review with the D E C?
I can just imagine what that's gonna do to the assessment value of that map.
That's a problem.
Well, sure.
And I have, I've spoken to the supervisor about that, I've talked to the supervisor of other towns, saying that, you know, I don't think you're going to change what the D E C is doing, but I think in a positive way, like in Hana Dyer County, they have a supervisor's report, right? So I talked to Supervisor Dear about that, and said, you know, I talked to a couple of the other supervisors around town, and I think it would be a good thing that you say, hey, you know, the economic value of property is probably gonna be impacted, right? I mean, you, you could have somebody who's owning a piece of land, and who's speculating that, you know, um, that there could be impacts now. There are a couple of projects that we've already approved that may have been impacted, is what I'm hearing on the street, right? That's what initiated my discussion with Supervisor Dear, so, um, you know, when, when, when they, when they take this jurisdictional look at it, what the D E C is thinking is that traditionally their maps have been too small. So they're gonna come back, they're gonna have somebody, they, either you can send the D, just like I remember, either you can send the D E C out, or you can hire your own consultant, and have them go out, and the D E C goes and checks it, but they feel, you know, a series of a period of five to seven years, that the mapping that they have will be up to date and will continue to be sustainable through this process. So eventually, they will make the maps accessible to everybody when they start to get up to date, but they're still gonna have people go through and, and require the jurisdictional approvals, but it, it's an issue, because the other thing that we're hearing is, and, you know, I don't know how it's gonna impact, you know, some of the larger projects in the central New York community, because one of the other things that we've heard is that now if you want to remediate, uh, wetlands, now let's take the case in point of like, uh, Erie Village, right? You drive by there, it was a very successful project, but if you look at how Erie Village was developed, the whole site is a low mark, right, a letter of map provision, right? That the developer went to the D E C and filled the area and created wetlands over here, but brought everything up and out of the wetlands, right? But he, he, he did that in different areas, it used to be that you could do offsets in different areas. Now what they're saying, what they're telling us, and this is all in flux, right, so everybody's learning on the fly. Um, what was the comment they made that everybody laughed? We're, we're built, we're flying an airplane as we're building it, is what they said at D E C, right, which, I mean.
Going up to it.
Yeah, yeah, right, so, I mean, but now they're saying that if you have a site that you want to build on, right? And you want to move the wetlands around, or, or take the wetlands and put them on another site, um, you can't, you have to do it on your site.
Okay.
And then the other thing that we've seen is, if they think, right, and this kind of makes sense, you know, if you have a, a site like this, and there's a wetland on the outside of your, of your site, and it doesn't show on yours, then they will ask you that you have to go to your neighbor and do a delineation on your neighbor's land, or your neighbors not know that you do that, right?
Crazy.
Yeah, so, so what they were saying on one project we were reviewing is, hey, we want to have an old map, we know, this is how crazy it was, we know there's a wetland off your property over here, and there's a road here, right? But this wetland is only, goes right up to the road, therefore, on your property, you have to show the line of a hundred feet into your property.
Is it, how far into the adjoining property? Do they, is it anywhere on the adjoining parcel, or is it within a certain distance?
It's open to interpretation. It's open to interpretation when they make their jurisdictional determinations.
It's like the setbacks for the zoning. It's like the setbacks for zoning.
So, to be, to be clear though, what makes a wetland a wetland, the three things is not changing. It's how you go about finding out if you have one or not.
Well, they talked about a lot of different things, right, now they're talking about rural pools, which, which are.
Yeah.
Right, temporary wetland areas, right, but it depends on the quality of the wetland.
That's really tough.
Pool, right, so they send their biologist out, and they say, well, we think this is instrumental to the rest of the biology that's going on here.
Every rural pool is important, is what the answer is, really, compliment from DEC, so, I understand.
So, I think.
It's, it's, this would make a great question on the updated site plan checklist, have you? Done this, whatever, however that gets worded.
I think it's gonna have to, it's just, it's, it has to happen. I mean, we can't move forward.
It used to be the mapping, you could go in and, you know, use that, but. The cost will end up coming on to the owner, one, either because they'll hire an independent person to come out and get it done, and that'll happen more quickly. Or you wait and try and get it for free, but that takes a lot longer, so you waste money in that process, so you have to pay. So, but, but, and in all this flux, they're not gonna have extra time to be answering all these questions and stuff, so, that's, that's a tough one.
This is gonna hurt development going forward.
Absolutely.
No question.
Absolutely.
No question.
So, I, I did, I did have a, I mean, I guess most of you know Katie Johnson, right, Katie and I go back and forth, they're high school classmates. And, you know, Kate said, from their perspective, this is going to be a big issue for core, you know, from. From all of upstate, right, so I'm, I'm sure others like, you know, Benderson and, you know, the rest are all gonna, you know, Huber Brewer are all gonna gang, gang together and probably say, hey, look. This is really gonna impact the economic development of upstate New York, right, you know, we want to do what's environmentally correct, but you gotta work with us here.
So, if anybody's thinking about becoming a wetland specialist, now is a great time.
You know, typically, you'd have hundred and eighty days or something to satisfy contingencies of a contract before you bought it. It could be a year and a half now. And the cost just keeps going up, which.
Well, it's not even a cost, it's the unknown, right? Because it's so narrow deep.
You don't know what your neighbors have, I'm not buying that land.
So, a lot of people probably start to staff wetland people, even whether they delineate it or not, they can help them make informed choices, right, when they purchase properties or start to head into development, any. And civil engineer and landscape architect would be doing this anyway, like.
Was it last year that the, if you look carefully at your assessment, the value of the land under your house went up dramatically? Doesn't, yeah, this proportion of the total value of your home, it's into two pieces, it's land and structure. Well, the land had been previously undervalued, that W went through the town, it'd be a value.
Value of the land is high.
Enough, no, the overall value may have gone up, but that will strictly be a function of market sales. But the intrinsic value of how you got it. Makes the land more valuable. Value of land is critical to the development, and if there's less land available. You have two problems, one is you got the guy who's zoning, it's speculated, assuming it's gonna go up in value. And instance, if they take that, you've gotta have the mitigation on your own property, let's say, put it in a micro. Which was buying thousands of acres in the southern half of the county to mitigate the wetlands.
They might already be in.
Under the wire.
Well, what, what they said in the seminar, once again, I, I never, I'm far from being an expert, right, I'm just.
You'll have to send me the link to that, I can watch it.
I, I think I tried to save it, now it's gonna send out to everybody. Where was I going with that?
My crown.
All right, wait, wait till you delineate wetlands on my property.
What they said was.
I'm coming after you.
Nobody's grandfather. The rules changed January first, twenty twenty-five, but the only way that you would have been grandfather would be if. You had completed SEACER and/or you had an approved site plan by the municipality, you're working it. Now, since then, right, I heard that. There was a development, but they went back and they said, we don't care, that area is now jurisdictional, we want you to go back. And review.
That's a lawsuit.
Well, and that's, that's what, that's what, you know, people I'm working with are saying, that, you know, somebody somewhere is going to initiate a lawsuit. Um, to see what's going on here.
If you try to come online property, delineate wetlands because we're adjacent, and you need to do that, no, you can't come on my property.
You still need permission, no one's gonna be just doing it.
I know I got wetlands, and I don't need you removing my property, right?
Yeah, but, right, yeah, can't get my property value down, right?
The point being that this doesn't change where the wetlands are. This just changes how much effort the developer has to make to find out. Right, so let's, I want to make sure, they're still where they are. And just because one was mapped or not mapped on the DEC wetlands map, which most people know isn't accurate anymore anyway. It's still on the developer or the owner to go through the process of finding out where they are, and it's on the town, I think, through the review process to make sure that they've done that.
First item, here in the first item of cost to the developer is the cost of the land. How much do I have to pay for the land? How many lots can I break it up into and make houses come out of the ground? If the land is scarcer, it's gonna become more valuable, or everybody that builds a house on it is gonna pay more for the value of the land under it. And that's something that a homeowner looks at and says, it's a house, I'm buying a house, it happens to be on land, yeah, I'm just getting the land. That's where the money is coming, that's, and that's, Rich, Rich and I are on a field day with this one, because. All I can think of is grievance day, it's gonna last a week now, because all those landowners will come and say. I've held this land for thirty years, knowing it's gonna be valuable someday. But Attorney Lombardi, he had that land that put the huge solar farm behind the high school, he's had that land since he was in college. That's sixty years ago.
It doesn't change the cost, it doesn't change the land, the wetland is still wherever it is, it just changes how much they have to spend to find out where.
But if they haven't been delineated in the past, and now they are, you just devalue their land, yes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Because what he has.
I just assume there's wellin everywhere.
Well, it's really good.
Their opinion is, this is where you have to get the number, right, but it's, it was in the millions, right, it's gonna add millions of acres. It might have been one million, or it might have been multiple millions, I mean, it didn't matter to me, but the bottom line is, it's going to add significant, this is the DEC saying it. It will add significant wetlands to our, you know.
Oh, to the known database, basically.
I think it turned the question around, it's not whether you can delineate wetlands, just not delineate land that can build on. And that's what makes it so difficult, insisting that state did a role to look at those and say, if this battery got a problem, beyond that, I'm good, well now.
Quarry looks so negative.
And, and then. Yeah, of course, I'm a terrific. Keep the green, that grass, don't get any, don't get any wetland plants, or make sure until the night, I mean, years from now, we've got two hundred and fifty acres.
And then, then the question becomes, right, and this has come up in the seminar, here at the webinar, is, you know, okay, they come in in front of a planning board. Whose responsibility is it, right? I mean, does the planning board have a responsibility, right? I mean, generally, right, we can, we can talk to an applicant and say, hey, we think you need to get your wetlands delineated. The bottom line is that is that responsibility most likely lies with the developer.
Absolutely.
Right, but it's still, it's still.
In context of the SEACER process, they will have to dumb it, instead of getting a map as they do now in database, apparently, you gotta hire somebody and go out and find those plants to the ordinary mine that's on dry land, you know.
You wanted to do that, you'd have to do that anyway. If you had any inkling as a developer that there's a wetland anywhere near there, then you have to have it delineated, or you have to stay so far away from it that you waste.
I know, there's that hundred, that hundred foot rule, and I've dealt with that in your line.
I don't think it's about, I mean, I think it's a paperwork nightmare, but it doesn't change where the wetlands are.
It, it changes how. You approach the work, and whether.
That's the cost of your business and the developer.
Now, if I have a piece of land, I gotta prove that I've got dry land instead of. In the past, taking the state's mapping system and working through that, you don't have a body, even imperfect, to work from, you've gotta create an original world knowledge. And that's very complicated, expensive, and off putting, to say the least, particularly in upstate New York, and this is one of the things that creates one of those economic struggles we have for many years. We've got a terrain and topography and a residual glacial world that in a sense penalizes us against someone like Texas. All the forces against us and having a robust economy in the country.
Dan, we've also got water, and most of the states down in the southwest don't, so if I had to pick between those two tough choices, I'd stay here.
I agree, and that's one of my questions.
And you were invited to check the population patterns, the southwest versus us.
I know.
You know, Kate, but there's that story, that doesn't seem to gain traction, doesn't seem to bother the majority of people who make decisions about whether they're gonna live.
Remember I asked a question about twenty years from now? I don't want somebody on the planning board saying, what the hell were they thinking in twenty twenty-five when they allowed that to happen?
Allow what?
That development to happen. Why, why did we build those five thousand houses, and now there's no water, there's no water tip, there's no aquifer? I mean, what do you do with all those stranded people out, literally?
Just stop, just stop here digging cotton, just stop really digging alfalfa. There's eight percent of water is used on these subsidized agricultural activities, and it comes to that material difference, then that's what happens.
Wetlands are a very important part of the ecology of our area, which is one of the reasons a lot of people want to live here, it's one of the reasons why we do have good water supplies. Wetlands are not a bad thing, just because they prevent humans from going around and bulldozing everything that they want to do. Wetlands are not a bad thing.
Granted, the question is, if on that county, you mentioned, not on that county, but you mentioned that. The E, the DEC is looking at upstate New York. And I'm wondering whether it's being picked on, or is that DEC that?
It's statewide, it's a statewide representation.
But only the state?
It's only DEC statewide, yes, okay.
And Doug, would you say we have any projects currently before us or coming that this would greatly affect? Just off the top of your head, sorry if I got that spot.
I, I think what we're gonna see is. Something like a tracer tech came up, I think, I think it would be a problem.
Yeah.
Are they in and out, given the jurisdictional question isn't necessarily clearly related to your January first status?
Yeah, there it is.
Right.
We'll have to, yeah, the northern part of the south.
But I, but I think, you know. You know, we think Garden Park is coming before us shortly, right? I don't think, I mean, they made a comment that. If you feel strongly that, you know, if you're on top of a mountain, then you don't need to do this.
That's the developer's decision, with their higher. Stat, like, yeah, like, they would ask, we said, do, you know, it's.
But, but I, I wouldn't think, I mean, from my perspective, I wouldn't think there'd be a problem there.
No, I don't either.
I have one more thing before you, sorry.
Very quick, it's very quick, I was gonna say it before. Um, no, I just wanted to remind everybody that the planning symposium, because Lisa's not here too, so I just wanted to, is March twenty-sixth, and. Uh, I just got an email that the deadline for anyone who hasn't signed up that would like to is March seventeenth, so just wanted to.
Is it purposeful if we, given these are preferences, you are signed up, or you need to do something?
No, you are, yeah, she was gonna sign everybody, but yeah, she's gonna take her, all of that back to her, or, or whatever, but, and also to remind you guys that it's coming up. A week.
Second motion.
All right, so go to the main conference, everybody, all in favor?